It's six o'clock. I will open the meeting. This is the Monday, October 29, 6:00 PM meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business is to ask if anybody's taping the meeting. Nobody is present. LakeCam obviously is. So let the record reflect that LakeCam is taping the meeting. Our first order of business is to meet with Beta Group to discuss the Route 79 project. Guys, thanks for coming. We appreciate it. We're looking forward to learning about the status of the project from your perspective and hopefully you can answer some questions that we have about it. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves and then you can have the floor.
Sure. Matt Hsu with Beta Group. I'm the project manager. I've been managing the day-to-day efforts of the project.
And I'm Bill McGrath also with Beta. I'm a senior associate working with Matt.
So, you know, we don't have a formal presentation really prepared for you guys, but understood you wanted to get an update and that you've got some questions. So just a real brief summary, I tried to outline on the schedule here. The 25% design has been completed and submitted to MastDOT. Just today, we responded to all the comments that we received from MastDOT on the project. The next step will be for them to schedule a resolution meeting to talk about some of those comments in more detail. And the town will be alerted to that date. Then moving forward from there, we had a neighborhood public meeting back in 2016 that was pretty well-attended. And overall, I think there was support for the project, that meeting. MastDOT will hold another design public hearing that we anticipate to happen somewhere January, February timeframe of 2019. And then we need to move into final design for the project. It's on the 2020 Transportation Improvement Plan with MastDOT. Funding, construction funding's been allocated for about $9.3 million on the draft tip. As you're aware, it was originally programmed for about $4.5 million. The draft tip for 2019 to 2023 is at 9.4 at this point. I'm not sure when that, you don't know the dates of when that gets approved? Bill, do you, that when it goes from draft to final?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's a set date. I think it's kind of a rolling, rolling process.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I'll just open up to you guys for questions, concerns you have on the project.
Just, just, does everyone understand the MastDOT process in general at least?
Tell us a little. Tell us about it because lots of people do look at this meeting. A lot, a lot of people will.
Want to do that, anyone?
Go ahead.
Since I brought it up. So the, the project is going through the, the State's Transportation Improvement Plan, which means that the town is responsible for designing the project. MastDOT is responsible for providing construction funding and oversight. And they'll advertise the project for construction. So the project started, and I don't remember the exact year, but with the town basically approaching MastDOT with a project notification request that the project be considered for funding through the tip pro, the tip process. That was accepted, and then we moved into the, the design process, which with MastDOT is a preliminary design called the 25% design, which as Matt noted, we've made that submission. The next step is we'll resolve some comments. And MastDOT will hold a design public hearing, which will be an opportunity for, for the town and the public to come hear about the project, ask some questions, get some clarification. Following that is the final design process. That's sort of a three-step process. First, a submission called the 75% design, which is the first final design submission that MastDOT will see. They'll review that. Next will be 100% design. They'll review that, make comments. If appropriate, then there'll be a PSNE called Plans, Specifications, and Estimates Submission, which will be the final submission before they, they advertise for construction. And then concurrent with that is, is the right-of-way process as well. They get, the boards are aware there's certain easements and some, some acquisitions that are required so that the project can move forward.
Thank you. Did you have any specific questions? I'm pretty sure you have.
Well, certainly it would be a fair number of where we are today. That is, the responses that you, you answered back to the state. Do you envision the design changing much between where it is today and where it is when it becomes 100%? Is it mostly moving catch basins? Because is, most of the other issues resolved? Sidewalk width, width of the road, where the, where the culvert should be? That's all been done?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the bigger comments that we received on the initial submission, which I believe the board's aware of, is that MastDOT suggested that instead of, we, right now, the project includes sidewalk on one side of the road for the whole project and shoulders to accommodate bicycles. In order to use construction funds from MastDOT and from the state and federal funding sources, those are minimum requirements that we have to hit. As part of their review, they suggested consideration for a shared-use path, which would be a two-way bicycle pedestrian facility on one side of the roadway with some separation to the road by grass or other means. And then the roadway would still be widened, but not by quite as much as we have now. But overall, that, there's no, really wouldn't be any savings in right-of-way impacts with that scenario. And our understanding is that the town does not want to proceed with that change. It would require a complete resubmission of the 25% design as well because it's a significant change. That said, MastDOT, MastDOT has said, if the town does not want to proceed with that, that's fine. And generally, they've approved the design that we have in front of us. There is what's called a design exception process that the project still needs to go through because we're only, we only have sidewalk on one side of the road. MastDOT's desirable standard is to have it on both sides of the road. And we've gone through a report process to document the impacts with doing that. You know, I know the town doesn't want to have sidewalks on both sides. And we believe it will be approved as is with the one sidewalk. So.
What's the motivation for the MastDOT requesting a redesign that included a separate pathway?
I think that was us, wasn't it?
No.
Isn't that what they had mentioned when we were there? That they had said that because we didn't want to have the two sidewalks, but we have a fog lane, right? So it's a fog lane and then sidewalk on the other side. And I thought they had said that it was another alternative that we could propose. And then when we met with them, said, you know, that's just going to delay the project even longer. It wasn't anything we had a desire to move forward with.
Right.
I think they, they decided it was that woman who was on the phone from Boston who mentioned it as an option.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, is we're pretty far into this. And they submit, I mean, they suggest a change that is a fundamental redo of the whole project.
Right.
Remember she was the one on the phone? Because she was the one responsible for any changes in submission. If it was going to be different, I guess probably that exception process is what it was.
Yeah, that's Michelle, Michelle Danola, the Complete Streets Engineer.
Yeah, she was the one that mentioned it as an option. And I guess in case maybe it doesn't go through this process. And they had an alternative to.
Right, but it's, that's not a reasonable option. You'd think that she would know that, that it's an incredible delay and increased cost to the town to re, to do a redesign from scratch.
At a minimum, what she's asking, she wants us to include that in the report. You're required to list possible design alternatives.
I see, okay.
So we'll, we'll end up showing that in the report and the associated impacts and costs. But my understanding is that, you know, they, they, as with the, the intersection of Route 18, they had preferred a roundabout there. They're not going to force the town to go one way or the other on this.
No, should they?
That would be our biggest question.
I mean, it's funny, we, we sat here going through the process of getting money to build a new police station. And we couldn't believe, as we learned more and more, that it would cost $2 million, $4 million, $8 million. And this is very similar in the sense that we don't necessarily know all of the work you guys have to do behind the scenes to push this forward for it to happen. So that's kind of why that's helpful for an explanation relative to what the design standard expectation is from the different layers of, of government that are, have oversight because of the funding source. So I appreciate that explanation.
The other simple question is probably like two simple reasons why it went from a $4 million project to a $9.5 million project. Once again, just for the public.
Sure. So when the project was initiated, as Bill mentioned, I think it was back in 20, 2011?
Yeah.
That was prior to what's called the Healthy Transportation Policy Directive issued by MastDOT, which stated that all projects shall consider, shall include sidewalks and bicycle lanes unless there is very good reason to not do so, which is the design exception process. So the, the project was originally envisioned with sidewalk in some locations, but not all. You know, intersection areas with wheelchair ramps. The widening of the roadway, I believe, was originally at the project initiation stage, was maybe providing three to four-foot shoulders, which at the time was the recommended minimum. Now that standard has increased to five-foot shoulders, adding sidewalk for the entirety of the project, which introduces additional drainage infrastructure because now you have continuous curbing on one side. You're catching that, that rainwater on the road. You need more drain, catch basins and pipe manhole to drain the roadway. So those are the, the largest reasons.
The utility sidewalk coming up in December, a couple of months from now. What's involved in that?
So generally, the focus is on private utility relocations. The, there's a number of utility poles that need to move and the associated overhead wires and any risers that are on those poles. So we will walk the project with MastDOT. We'll stop at every single pole. They will look at what's on the pole along with the utility owners that are out there. And the utility owners develop a scope of work based on that walk. And they have to submit what's called a force account estimate to MastDOT so MastDOT can budget for the reimbursement. The private, depending on the utility to get reimbursed, some of them full reimbursement, some up to 50%.
Right, Midstream Gas and Electric obviously is involved with you 100%.
Right.
Okay. So in that walk, not only is the Department of Transportation, it's Midstream Gas and Electric walking the site with you folks.
Yep, and, you know, any, you know, the.
Contest and brush.
Yep.
Excuse me.
The water, you know, whoever controls the water facilities would be on the walk. The town BPW.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And the money that goes to you folks, we paid you some money to date. And, and I forget what that.
Around 300, I think we paid to date.
Let's say it's 300,000. It was 314, 340, but it's 300,000 and change. And you've done this, you've designed it with the, with the single sidewalks, with the movement of, of the, of our catch basins. You know what's really going on unless there's a change. What do you see your funding going from to? A good case and a bad case maybe. If you're at 300 today and we complete the project in 2020, 21, how much more do you folks get where we're on the budget discussion?
Yeah, so we had provided a range a while back for the final, from the 75% design through the construction services piece of this, which on our end, for a MastDOT project, unless the town wants a higher level of involvement from a consultant, our role is typically limited to reviewing shop drawings and, you know, occasional site meetings. It's not a, MastDOT provides a full-time resident engineer, so it's a limited construction services role. But we had provided a range of another 500,000 to 600,000 for the final design. And that, again, it's based on three to four more design submissions in that construction services. This, that also includes some money for expenses. There's additional survey that we need to undertake for some areas for the, we're designing some stormwater quality basins on the project. Based on comments from, from MastDOT, we may need some additional survey outside of what we have.
There'll be some, some borings that are needed for the traffic signal.
And retaining walls. So that's not all labor fee per se. It's, there's some sub-consumption expenses.
How do we, I understand, we'll call it the GESTA, whatever that number is. Say it's 500,000. So it goes from 300 to 800. Who approves the expenditure of that 500? Do we know how you're doing on that project? And it certainly seems, when I say hi, if it's, if it's done already, I just can't wrap my mind around spending another $500,000. So it really says what you've done today, you have to double that cost. Maybe even triple, triple it, only adds another 600 to it.
It's, it's not done. We've, we've done a preliminary design, which lays out sort of all the parameters of the work. Lays out, I think, as you had mentioned, the width of the road, the width of the sidewalk, the limits of the project, an idea of, of the drainage, how many catch basins and manholes and how much pipe we need. But there's quite a bit more work to do. As Matt mentioned, there's, there's the additional design submissions. But there's also the detailing of, of all that work. All the detailed grading, the, the final design of the drainage system. The water quality basins need to be designed. So the, the preliminary design is, is not a finished product in any sense. It, it lays out the parameters and it allows us to, to get a pretty good handle on what the construction cost is going to be.
Right. Is it based on time? That is, if we pay you a number, and I don't know what the number, say it's $300 an hour. Is it based on an hourly basis or is it based on a percentage of the $9.4 million, $9.3 million?
It's, it's based on hours. We, we do an estimate of how many hours.
So there's a billable hours as we move forward that we would understand that you need to spend another $200,000 in the next five months. But we don't have money put aside for that. So it's important to us, obviously, to, to understand by quarter or by, when I say by six months, this thing's rolling along. So however you want to do it, we'd have to understand that. We don't have funds sitting around earmarked. We don't have another $500,000 sitting around.
If I may, John, you said, who approves the payment? Well, if it goes through the chapter, MastDOT has, would review everything for approval for payment. Because I thought that's how we were paying for this, was our chapter 90.
But we better figure that out.
Yeah, because.
Right. I mean, do we get invoices from you guys on a monthly basis?
Yeah.
And that's kind of, you're, I assume, coming to you, one of you.
Invoices.
You're both pointing to each other.
Right, they come to me and I give them.
Do we owe you any money now? I mean, I'm not saying $5,000. I'm not saying $5,000. I'm saying, do we owe you lots more money?
No, no.
No, I'm pretty sure we paid it all up to date, except for this meeting tonight.
Certainly, it's like doing a quarterly budget.
So what we'll do, if we're going to move forward, MastDOT has a spreadsheet for estimating man-hours, effort for, for all the detail work that goes into each one of those submissions. So we'll, as part of our estimates of the town for our work, we'll provide that so you can see a breakdown of what's involved in each submission, each one of the tasks, the hours that are involved in that. So it's a, it's a pretty detailed breakdown.
Right, so it's, it's not based on the percentage of the $9.3 million. It's based on how billable our picks is.
Correct. Just an example, the 75% design task, there's probably 20 to 30 subtasks under that that we put hours to. It's a lot more detail than you probably want to see.
It's, it's very. No, I, I think John's questions are appropriate in the sense that we, I understand how complex engineering services are for a project like this and how expensive they are. And that's not to say that, that it shouldn't be that way. You guys, when your company's putting an incredible amount of time into, into this process, I think what's kind of concerning, and it has nothing to do with, with you or what you're doing, is that when this project did start, it was under a different design standard. That standard changed. The project scope hasn't changed, but the cost is more than double. And that's kind of, to John's point, is that, you know, we're just trying to have this conversation in public where it's recorded because these are the questions that we're fielding from people out in the, in the town. And we want to make sure that they have an understanding as to why it is what it is. We're committed to going through with this project. We want to see it come to fruition. We want to see that road get improved. We think it's the best way to improve that stretch of road in the correct manner. We've talked about the idea of, of just repaving it, but we know there's, there's design issues. We know there's drainage issues that need to be addressed, and we're, we're committed to that. But I think, you know, we just wanted to make sure we had an understanding of, of all of this stuff and had this conversation so that folks could share in it.
Yeah, and we want to make sure that, that the board and the town is comfortable with, with what we're doing. That you understand it. It is a complicated process to go through, particularly with the MastDOT design process, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think a project timeline in terms of whatever you can give us for estimated budget, you know, so that way we know what to anticipate in terms of outflow of funds and timeline. Because we now know, you know, you're saying that the majority of this will probably be done with up to the 75% design submission. Is that where you believe, you know, through that piece is going to be the bulk of the time that you're looking at?
Yeah.
So, yeah, if we can know, because that's coming up before our next town meeting for the budget. So it would be within this budget year. So we really need to understand what that looks like so that we can appropriately budget.
But we do have it in chapter 90.
Sure, but that doesn't necessarily mean we want to.
Right, I mean, we're looking at overall road projects everywhere. So just from an overall monetary perspective and what it looks like for the town, I think it'd be extremely helpful to know, you know, what the range is, what the expected outflow is of funds for us, and then that way we can.
Right, another $500,000 is simply 100% of next year's chapter 90 money.
Yeah, we, we can, can break it down as, as, well, obviously, for each phase, we'll break it down so you'll have an idea of what each one of those submissions costs.
And the other thing is, I want to make sure, when I say the town, I want to make sure the town is not holding anything up so that if we expect the project to begin in June of 2020, it doesn't become June of 2021 because of something that you or this board did. So you need to really alert us to any problems that we need to try to solve. Because you, you drive the road. We're not really entirely clear how it survives into 2020, but we said that a couple of years ago. But it is just about at its end of the line.
Right, and I, and I guess I would say too that, you know, in the event that, you know, we just haven't seen a full timeline, I think, of the project. You know, ever since we've been on the board, we kind of have not known what's coming next, I think, for the most part. And if it's now, we're at the acceleration point where everything starts to happen pretty quickly, then just knowing what's coming at us will be extremely helpful.
Yeah, and I think what Matt handed out is, is a good start. But we'll, we can refine that and obviously add some design fee numbers to, to each one of those milestones.
And what happens, I mean, in the event that, because, I mean, this has been kicked out at least once before, right, by DOT? So in the event that they kick it out, I mean, what additional, I guess that's the point where maybe we wouldn't know. There could be another standard change in design that could cause another submission down the road. I mean, we're just trying, we're just trying to get this.
Hopefully, they're done with their bike lanes and everything else.
I hope so. We're just trying to get it done and have a timeline on it so that we know.
Would you expect it to be done before December of 2020? Is it a six-month project once, once they start or is it a lot longer?
I think it's probably two construction seasons.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would say 2022.
We need electric car charging ports by then designed into it, right?
So is there solar power?
Roller blading lanes.
The other thing I want to bring up is that, that this number that we're throwing around does not include the right-of-way costs that the town has to take on as well as part of MastDOT project.
Yep.
Which is really tough to nail down at this point in time because you really have to have an appraiser on board. You can't do that until we get the 75% design approved. That the 75% design task is one of the most critical because the completion of it really kicks off the right-of-way coordination process. And that's something that the town will need to be ready to hit. You know, hit the ground running on.
I've retained an appraiser that does this all the time. But wouldn't, we would need to go to annual town meeting next year, next June for whatever that amount is, right?
Yes, because they'll want to start, they'll be able to start work in July, probably July of 19, maybe Appraiser.
So maybe a fall town meeting then.
Right, there's really only, it's not a lot of square footage. It's only 16, 1700 square feet. And it really is at three, three parts of the road, if you will, curved and two intersections. The rest of it, there's certainly temporary easements, lots of stone walls, lots of things going on. But the permanent ones are about 1700 square feet.
So just, just, sorry for interrupting. So it's actually, there's, there's eight, about 1800 square feet of takings, which I call them takings because it's areas where the roadway, the layout really needs to be altered.
Yes.
In addition to that, there's 30, there's 16,000 square feet of permanent easements that we need for things like a hydrant relocation or a stormwater outlet, which, not to say those couldn't be donations also, though, right? Along with the temporary easements.
Yeah, I think one of the important things in the right-of-way process, obviously, having the appraiser on board. But communicate, you, you need to communicate with, with each one of the property owners through the process. But there's an opportunity, if people are willing, to donate some of the, the easements that are required rather than the town paying for them.
Which happens fairly frequently.
Yeah, yeah, no, it does. And in this particular case, we're, we're not looking at large pieces of, of property from, from folks. It's, it's really fairly narrow strips of, of land along the roadway. So that, there certainly is an opportunity if people are willing.
To get their road fixed that's in front of their house.
To get the road fixed, to get a sidewalk.
Right.
And, and maybe donate some of the, the land that the town needs.
I didn't see any significant widths except at changing the road layout in about three sections.
Right.
I don't want to oversimplify it, as I understand it.
Yep, no, that's.
You're going to build stone walls. You're going to do plant and trees. You're going to do all kinds of other things as, as mitigation to, to the eas, whatever mitigation you have to do to get the easement.
Right.
How often is eminent domain? How often is, is eminent domain used for purposes of roadway layout? Is that ever used?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's used frequently. And a lot of times it's a, a combination of, of eminent, eminent domain, um, and donations.
Yep.
So.
So you don't necessarily have to pay for it.
No, no, I, listen, I have no intentions.
You have to pay the, um.
We're the experts, we're not paying a cent.
I, I don't look at the land takings to be significant, that is, there's formulas and there's eminent domain. And you have to have the right appraiser, you have to have the right attorneys that are gonna say. The reality of it is, I'm taking two feet of your property, what's it's worth? And I don't wanna belittle that, it isn't like we're taking a hundred feet of someone's property that is really worth eighty thousand dollars.
It's worth what it's worth, um, yeah.
The, the key thing really is for Mast dot to be able to move forward and advertise the project for construction and award a contract, um, they need to have what they call a secure right-of-way, which, which means their contractor has the right to, to work on property where the work has to be done.
Well, that's why I asked about eminent domain, 'cause it sounded to me like it was either they donated or.
We, we're adamant that we want.
We have to negotiate something with them, but there's, it's really more of just figuring out what the value is and saying, here's the number.
We were adamant that we wanted to get on that project, go talk to the neighbors, go, go get going on that. But it seems to be you gotta do the seventy-five percent before you can get talking.
Yes.
'Cause I don't expect the eminent domain part of it to change width-wise. We've already made the sidewalks and the bike paths on a singular side.
We know the size that it's going to be.
So we know the size.
Yeah, as long as there's no.
We wanted to get going on that, but we seem to be getting a real pushback on that.
Well, Mast dot, I say prefer, and I thi- I think because it's federal money, has to wait until the, the seventy-five percent design is complete. So that, that, that ties things down even more than where we're at now.
Well, we, we did hire the appraiser, we certainly want him to look at it, we wanna look at and advise us.
Yep.
What has to happen.
Having the appraiser on board is, is a big step, it's a big step forward, so.
Just something, I think I'm done with mine.
Okay, Mitzi, did you have any questions? All right, this is really helpful, I appreciate it. I think, um, you know, having a timeline is, is important. Having the budgetary component of the timeline will be helpful for us for the sake of planning, you know, for our next town meeting in June. But I guess that's it, unless there's anything else.
The pub- the public meeting, you had one. Is everyone notified by registered mail? How do we notify all the interested parties, Rita?
Uh, we looked up everybody's address.
So everyone got a registered.
We sent. Was it all Rhode Island Road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It was.
Right, so I don't know the size of that, but you're really talking someplace much bigger, whether you talk to the high school or.
We had it at the library last time.
And it fit?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay.
One more, just, um, what's the intersection of Precinct Street gonna look like again? Do you guys have that up there?
They're gonna tee it off.
It's gonna be like a triangle, right?
There's gonna be a road coming out onto seventy-nine as you come down that hill, heading towards. If you came from Route eighteen side, you go beyond the golf course, which is on the right-hand side. Going down the next hill, which is up about seven hundred feet, there's a road coming from the left-hand side that's gonna be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just so you're made aware of that.
Yeah, those are, that's good, because that's something that we can include in the, the supplemental survey that we've gotta get for some others, uh, locations. We'll have to keep that in mind.
And I don't know if we have to expand it to the owners of Le Barron, whether, does a road going?
No.
Say you have a road off of Route seventy-nine that goes to a larger development, do you have to notify those people? Or just the true abotters to seventy-nine?
Well, Mast DOT doesn't require formal notification of all the abotters. They, they place an advertisement in the local paper and on their website. It's up to the town if, if you choose to.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep it to seventy-nine. Okay, thank you.
So this is, um, the Precinct Street intersection, kinda tough to see, but the existing roadway edge is here today. Um, and we're just teeing this up more to get folks to slow down, so you don't make that rolling stop through. Uh, and improve site distance.
So hard to see.
Provides a shorter crossing for pedestrians. One thing, one comment we actually got on this intersection though was, uh, we may have to pull this radius back a little bit to, we need to make sure that the, um, the larger tractor trailer trucks can make that right turn, um, from that.
There's not much room on that side.
Um, well.
For houses, there's two houses right at the con.
As designed now, we, we've probably pulled this corner out by fifteen feet from where it is today.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna end up somewhere in between.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's really not pushing it back beyond where it is today, just changing your design a little bit.
No, we're looking to tighten this up overall from what it is.
We certainly thought that the road from Precinct Street, but staying on seventy-nine, going, going to the right there. We thought that that road was in fair shape. Do you have that as a total reconstruction?
Uh, in this?
Yeah.
Towards the, uh.
Towards Taunton.
The east, oh, no, towards, so this is.
DeGaffrey Road.
This is towards Taunton this way.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That section, uh, is, um, anticipated to be a resurfacing.
Okay.
With, with widening though for the bike lanes and the sidewalks. Yeah, then, there was a paramount of existing pavement here in this direction. It's really, really thin pavement section, you know, three inches in some spots, so.
Right, okay.
I'm gonna start riding my bike to Taunton, just to do it.
Do you folks live local? Do you go Route seventy-nine every day, or at all?
Occasionally.
Okay. We won't question the psychic of anyone who wants to ride a bike on Route seventy-nine.
Well, one thing I, I wanna point out is that the, if you folks are familiar with the Southeastern Regional Planning, uh, Commission in Taunton.
I'm a commissioner.
So they have a, they're long-range, they have a long-range bicycle regional transportation plan. And seventy-nine is actually, parts of seventy-nine are on that as identified as, uh, you know, networks to provide on.
But not all of it, so we're.
No, 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 so we'll put the bike lane in and stop it, just, since it's going down a hill. We get it, we know where the sidewalks to nowhere and the bike lanes to nowhere. We get it. What a tragedy.
Yep.
We don't wanna get, get excited.
But you wouldn't believe the communities, Marion's, Matt Apoyset's, uh, in the Southeast region, they're all about it.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're on the old train line.
It doesn't go anywhere to anywhere.
I, I am too, but not on friggin' Route seventy-nine.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
I guess I can ride my bike to the golf.
Yeah, love that bike lane in Rainham.
No, I won't.
Goes to nowhere.
I won't go there. I won't go there. That would really run off.
Federal government trying to urbanize everywhere with their complete streets. But again, this was great, I really appreciate you taking the time to come in and answer some questions. And, um, this, having this information was very helpful.
Yeah, the public meeting will be a good one, as we're getting closer.
Yeah.
Great, anything else?
No.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have anything else we wanna talk about? Is there any new business for you? Anything, Tracy, is this good for you?
Yeah.
This is good.
Good on you.
A second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
We are adjourned?
Done, thank you.